We would like to speak to the agenda and so with this, I think it's either your council's pleasure. We will be speaking at a start or we can actually find out how many hours my in line if I figure out. Remember what we have to the agenda.
Yeah, so we did change the, we did change the order of things where we have. People speak either on non-agenda or agenda at item number four. So should we, but if you have preference to bring them on at six point seven, we can do that.
I think that's fun.
Part of, part of the discussion.
Yeah, I guess Dave, I'm just prepared to be sure that there were a couple of questions since the council. That's the last time about who we who has community that had one of those because it's possible. And then just the general.
What I'm hearing, Alex, great, great suggestion. Thank you for brought it up. I think what we're hearing. Based on what he just said is maybe if you'll just hang out. Do your speaker request form, then hang out for when we discuss it. And if there's any additional questions, we'll actually invite you to the dais.
Great.
Okay, all of that is in our council roles. We don't have to relax anything. Thank you for letting me know about those questions. That's really helpful. All right. So let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is six fifty-three. And we are calling together the, to order the talent council meeting of September seventeenth. Roll call, please.
Pardon me, counsel, just a quick reminder to everybody. I've gotten a message that the audio is not very clear on the other end. So when everyone speaks, please speak directly into your microphone so we can gather clear audio. I'm ready.
All right. And just, just for the record, that unclear audio was before I called the meeting to order. So.
Correct.
There's not much to do there.
Correct.
Okay, so calling the meeting to order, roll call, please.
Counselor Colley.
Here.
Counselor Panemiro.
Here.
Counselor Medina. Is online. I do see her. Counselor Pestizo.
Here.
Counselor Para Miller.
Here.
Mayor, Mayor Airsplid.
Here.
Counselor Byers is not present today.
So Council Medina is going to join us. She needed to go home to join us, so she'll be coming online. I see that she's here. I mean, I see that she, her prompt is here, but I don't think she's present yet. So.
Mayor.
Counsel, Council Panamara.
She's in the attendees.
Is she?
And need to be promoted.
I see her in the attendee list.
Okay, all right, great. We've got it all figured out then. Thanks a lot, everybody. Okay, so the, what happened to my screen? Oh, well, that was fun. Let me get this agenda here. Great. The next item on the agenda is Hector, when you get a chance, will you help me put the packet back up? The next member on the agenda is additions and corrections to the agenda. And city manager pro tem Alex Campbell asked that we remove eight point one. And then I think you had something you wanted to add, Alex.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Please, you all. In its place at eight point one, I request that you consider approval of an old town park contract. That is to complete the construction of the other elements of the skate.
I need the whole packet too. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to add as eight point one old town park contract and you have some, do you have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's been distributed to council and will be added to the packet, to the minutes rather for the record.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any other additions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take, any recognitions, proclamations or community announcements? And this would also include any recusals. Oh, no, recusal was on item two. Any recusals tonight?
I have a recusal.
Okay.
Um, I think I may have two potentials. And this is out of an abundance of caution, but just to be super, super cautious, I thought I would just note. For the record, six point seven and eight point three, which are both. Related to the skate classic event. This would just be a potential conflict for me because I am paid staff with the Talent Business Alliance. And TBA has offered to help. This community organizing group with their skate classic by being the pass through organization for their event sponsorships. But that would be a donation. So there would be no. Financial benefit, just to be clear.
Okay, and on that, I will also declare a potential conflict of interest. I'm paid staff of Talent Business Alliance. And we are, we have offered to the skate classic resident committee that they could pass through their funds through TBA. Without any fees charged. And. So 100% of the funding will go directly back to the event. So again, abundance of caution. I feel confident I could make a. A participate in and support the discussion. Okay, so then back, back on to item number three, recognitions, proclamations and community announcements. Anybody? Staff, do you have any community announcements for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Hector, just for your information, I got, there's another teams. Meeting. That looks like somebody else is in somehow. Maybe it's one of our staff members shared it to each other. I don't remember what it is. It was me. It's my fault. I, I created. I created an invite for CEO Warren Key. It has the link to this meeting in it, but also offered the opportunity to join the teams meeting. So I will just open that really quickly and clarify that where she should be.
Go ahead and, go ahead and take care of that, Alex, if you need to. Cheesa.
Hey, Lisa. Hey, so I created the calendar that I would respond back and create the teams involved. You can go to the, to the city, the city meetings once.
Awesome. Thanks. I'm glad she's here.
My apologies.
No problem. Uh, any community announcements?
Yes, please. So September twentieth, the Bear Creek stewards are doing a cleanup. That's nine AM to noon at Lynn Newbury Park, Lynn Newbury Park. That's at more information at www dot stream dash smart dot com. And there is a Bear Creek cleanups page there that has several events around the watershed. Talent Harvest Festival is October fourth and information on all the fun things that are going to happen, including the light parade. And opportunities to volunteer is at www dot talent harvest festival dot org. Fire danger has been reduced to high, but is still at high. So folks should be aware, continue to be aware of that. And on that note, as we are changing seasons. Folks who do live in or adjacent to flood plains recently received a letter from the city. Encouraging them if they're not aware of exactly where that map is in that piece of their property to, that they are welcome to come to the city and we can provide them more information.
Great. Any other community announcements? All right, let's move on then to item number four on the agenda, which is public testimony. We do have a speaker request form. I'm going to check in real quick with Hector. Do we have any, did you get any online?
No additional, Mayor.
Okay, so at, with that, we'll go ahead and call David Bob to the podium. Dave, would you please state your name and your city for the record? And then we give you five minutes.
Great. Yeah, the name's Dave Bob. I live up on Anderson Creek in Talent. I moved here in nineteen ninety and at that time skateboarding was illegal in Talent. And I got approached by a lady in the Parks and Rec Department that knew I had a degree in Berkeley in design and said, Dave, can you help us build a skate park? And two thousand hours and eighty-six thousand dollars later, we had a skate park. So we did an amazing job. We figured it would have cost the city about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build it then. But we had tremendous outpouring of volunteerism in this community. This is one of the greatest communities on the planet. So I really want to commend you for doing such a wonderful job on redoing the skate park. It has upgrades that are unbelievable. We now have a resource that's going to draw people from all over. And so again, I stuck my hand up and thought, well, we should have some kind of a party or celebration or contest. So we have now. Formed a committee and we are having the first annual talent skate classic. That's going to be an ongoing event that should draw people from a greater region. And we want to kind of cement talent and the Rogue Valley as a destination for skateboarding. The facility now is one of the best in the country. I want to commend the city. The city was the first city to build a concrete skate park. In the, in the entire state that was done by the city. So we have a great facility and we want to promote it. And so we thought that the skate classic would be great. We have about a fifteen thousand dollar budget that's not all cash. And we have raised over five thousand dollars already. And we're hoping that the city would be willing to give us a little discretionary money, hoping to ask for two thousand dollars to add to our budget. To get this thing started. We think once it's rolling and we get a good response that it will be self perpetuating. We'll probably schedule it for early or in the year. But it should be another event similar to the Harvest Festival that we have coming up that will draw people to the area. And we already have a website. We have a wonderful company that is donating drones. So we'll have a simulcast. We're looking to get a large screen, a digital. Screen so that you can see the event, even if you're not right on it, and it will be live cast. So we've gotten a fantastic response from the community. We have a lot of in-kind donations. We have a lot of. Giveaways and things for the contestants. We are trying to draw some pro skaters here to get some regional exposure. We already have budgeted a thousand dollars in prize. And then every buddy that signs up, all of their entry fees will add to that. So we're really trying to create an event that will perpetuate and really highlight what the city has done. For skateboarding and for the youth, you know, everybody's inside now on their computers or on their phones. And this gets kids out and in the sunshine and getting some exercise and they're very healthy. And so basically, we have a. Permit for a special event in with the city. I don't know how long that's proceeded, but we would like to have the city's. Support and, and making it a, an event that the city is, is behind.
Great, thank you. We don't have discussion during this item, but we will have an opportunity to talk about it more when it comes up on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more public testimony request forms. Item number five is city manager and other department reports. Staff.
Thank you. I have two, two items that I do are sort of more substantive and I want to start with those. So first, we have been searching for. Full-time specialist one. And we just got, I just got the word today that we've settled on a cat, a cat. His name is Matt Williams. And he would be offered to start at step A, so I'm requesting approval to offer him a conditional offer of employment subject to drug test. And yeah, bring him on board.
What was the position again?
Public Works Maintenance Specialist One.
Thank you. Any other reports?
I, oh, we recently got contacted from ODOT, is it the ODOT? Oh, thank you, DQ. Tessa had applied last year, I think almost a year ago for a, a grant to swap out some diesel equipment or electric equipment. So we are being offered a fifty-five forty-five, forty-five fifty-five split. So this grant would cover forty-five percent of the cost of replacing our primary mower with an electric mower. So Dana's been doing research. She's found a full seventy-two inch deck mower that would be the same size as we're currently using. Our cost would be about twenty-five thousand dollars, which we have in contingency in the parks fund. But wanted to also give council a chance to, to raise any concerns about us taking that step, given that you hadn't had the opportunity to. Preview that, that purchase and it wasn't in the budget.
Counselor Panamara.
How soon would the equipment need to be replaced otherwise?
It's really, it's soon. It's, we're struggling to identify spare parts for.
Right, so good timing. Okay. And the replacement cost for a new one would be more than twenty-five thousand dollars, I imagine? A little more expensive, but probably not twice.
I, I would guess with the forty-five percent discount that we're getting from the grant that we're, we're, and we're also, we'd also be saving money on fuel, I believe. So I'm pretty confident that's in that cash deposit.
And supporting our goals, our stated goals of environmentalism. Yeah, I, I'm pleased. Thank you. Thank you, Tessa. Only takes a year to get a grant.
Dana, Tessa's no.
Well.
Yeah, I know. Got it originally.
Gotcha.
But yes, thank you Dana for following it up.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
And then just, we are, we do have two positions still open at cityoftalent.org slash jobs. Police records specialist and a public works maintenance specialist to position those both close Friday. Also, I'm pleased to report that there's nobody still living at the Gateway Park. We do have transitional housing projects. Those folks have all been rehoused elsewhere. And so we have a few more trailers to remove that are going to be auctioned. And some personal effects that folks do have fifteen days under the law to potentially come back and, and claim. So that, that activity is happening. And.
Outstanding.
I will mention that a couple of things on Harvest Fest that we will be sharing information about the historic town hall during Harvest Fest. And we are doing a special use permit for the Harvest Fest. We're doing the process of, the same process of issuing a permit for a special activities, a special use permit. For the Harvest Festival, just to make sure that we're doing our normal internal processes, that we're not missing anything. I'm not planning on doing it, bringing you all a noise permit. The primary purpose of a noise permit is to make sure that neighbors are being notified and neighbors are already being notified. I'm confident that neighbors are being notified. And just two more things. One is I did give. The organizer permission to. The rogue seniors were, while I gave Together for Talent permission to have, to host rogue seniors at their, at their booth. At the Harvest Festival, although council did express their interest in, in directly speaking to those decisions. It was really timely to make that decision. So I, I don't think it's, if, if that does cause grave concern, I think there is time for you all to reverse that decision. But I wanted to like, give you that chance to do that. And then the final thing that I will note is we thank you for the careful note, reading of minutes. And we had to pull a set of minutes from the agenda last time. We'll, we'll be bringing those back shortly. And we're also taking some steps to add. Multiple ways of recording the audio for meetings. Part of the, part of the issue, part of the reason that we missed what we did is we did, we didn't have audio for the first couple of minutes of that meeting. And so we're going to have backup audio going forward so you can avoid those kinds of situations.
Very good. So thank you for the great report. Would, so would you like us to give you a decision on, if we're going to do a decision on public works specialist one, we could just add them to the consent calendar at six point eight? Is that a tonight thing?
That, that would be, that would be fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, if it, do I have consensus from the council just to add it to the consent calendar six point eight? Okay. And. I, I.
I don't think I need a formal motion on, on the, on the, on the grant.
Yeah, I think twenty-five is your spending authority, isn't it?
We, my spending authority is fifty. I'm, we may need to actually bring the purchase itself back to you all. But in terms of accepting the grant, I think, I think I'm okay. I think our just policies.
Oh.
Make sure that you're informed.
That's right, to make sure we see the grant. That's right. Okay. Anybody, anybody have any objection to that? Got to see the grant. Okay, very good. All right, I think that's everything. So, thank you for the staff report. And if there's nothing else, I'll move us on to the consent calendar with the addition of six point eight. Hector, for the record. Okay. Anything off of the consent calendar that we want to pull off for discussion?
Yeah.
Colleen?
I just wanted to clarify something before I asked this. Were we going to talk about? The skate classic and potentially invite Dave up at six point seven or at eight point? Or is it eight point three?
Probably eight point three. Yeah, I know I mentioned six point seven.
Would it be possible to move him up earlier so he doesn't have to stay as long? There's also an urban forestry committee member who I think wants to speak on eight point five. Apologies for not bringing this up when we were doing additions and corrections, but I'm just realizing it now. That way they don't have to wait until nine thirty.
I, I, it's definitely possible. You just, do we even need to relax the rules for that? I mean, the rules say that we have to do it at point two, so we'll just, I'll entertain a motion to relax the rules is what I'll do, just to keep it clean. Counselor Panamara.
No, I just wanted to point out that we have someone who's here too for seven point one, I believe. So. If we're, if we're talking about difference to people waiting.
Well, that, that one's going to come up right next. So, yeah, great. Okay, so again, for the record, we've added six point eight. Does the council have any items they want to pull out for discussion? Member Colleen?
I would like to pull out six point six and six point seven.
Okay. We'll do that right after we do consent then. And I'll move it to seven point one, both of those items. No, seven point one, seven point two. No, sorry. Seven point three and seven point four.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Hector, did you get that? Okay. Yeah, so we're going to take six point six and make it seven point three. And we're going to do. Six point seven and make it seven point four. And I'll entertain a motion to relax the rules.
I move to relax the rules.
Second.
We have a motion a second to relax the rules for the.
Before we vote, can we make sure you want the noise permit for the day of the dead race, hold and the.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask that question.
Great.
Okay. And. We have a motion a second to relax the rules. Any discussion? Roll call.
Where, is this a roll call on the relaxing the rules or the consent calendar?
Yes, for the rearrangement of the, of the agenda. And actually, I'm going to take all the rearrangements here in just a minute. Yeah, and I'll make sure you have plenty of time to, yeah, I won't jam it down your throat, I promise, Hector.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Panemiro?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Pestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Para Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Okay, so we, we are moving six point six to seven point three. And we're going to move six point seven to seven point four. And we're going to move up. Eight point three and make it eight point one.
And eight point five if we can.
And eight point five. And make that eight point two.
Thank you.
And so Hector will be moving eight point one to eight point three. Eight point two will be eight point four. And then eight point four will be eight point five. And eight point six will be eight point six. Eight point three is now eight point one and eight point five is now eight point two. Okay. Next item on the agenda is seven point one and it's, did we, did I do a motion for the, okay, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. The consent calendar with six point six and six point seven out and six point eight in. Counselor Colley?
Can I say as amended?
As amended.
I move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as amended. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Panemiro?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Counselor Para Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Seven point one is discussion of the next steps for the lease of the Talent Community Resource Center. Staff?
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. So I think there, there are two primary questions that, that I'm hoping for input or a head nod from council on, on this topic. So the first is there's some discussion about exactly what the patient mix would be at the clinic. So I've invited C, Rogue Community Health CEO, CEO, wanting to be with us this evening so she could speak directly to that point for more authority than I can. And then the, as we've begun talking about the, the framework of a potential lease. I've been thinking about exactly what that lease rate should be. And the instruction from council, as I understood it, should be cost recovery for the city. And so I just wanted to make sure that I'm thinking along the lines that you all think I should be thinking about what is cost recovery. And so. If, if we had a multi-tenant building, it would be significantly more money. But the lease framework that we're talking about with, with RCH would be the entirety of the building. And they would be responsible for all of the regular maintenance, all of utilities, really pretty similar to a triple net lease really, in effect at the end of the day. So what Finance Director Mason and I did was run some numbers in terms of. The replacement costs of replacing that entire building over the course of its life and replacing major systems such as the roof. And the, the HVAC system and with the windows. And exterior paint, those being the chief major maintenance items that will fall in the city. Just about everything else falling off a tenant. So that came out to about thirty-three hundred dollars a month or ninety-three cents a square foot. It's significantly below market rate. But it's, it is cost recovery. So I wanted to make sure that I was on the right track with you all. And we welcome the council's desire to whether you want to talk to. The Rogue Community Health CEO first or talk about the, the cost structure first.
Any questions so far? I just have one. So have you, did I, I may have missed it. You may have said it. Did you load staff? Yeah, any staff overhead or anything like that?
We did, we did not. I mean, the, I think part, part of the beauty of this structure is that there's. Very little staff time that would be dedicated as far as I, I can see. But that certainly is something that I didn't include that we may, may wish to.
Sounds like if you did, it would be nominal.
I think so.
Okay, Counselor Colley?
Yeah, I don't know if I saw it in there or not, but the other thing to consider would be kind of ongoing regular landscape maintenance and then any potential like. Tree maintenance, which comes out to be expensive sometimes. So it might be worth looking at that as a potential large cost that could be encumbered at some point.
Great, thank you.
Okay, what's? Any other on cost? Moving on? Moving on?
Great, so Hector, you've uh, has Kalissa accepted the promotion?
He's here.
Great. Uh, Kalissa, why why don't I let you introduce yourself to 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 start this next piece of the discussion?
Um, thank you, Alex. Can you all hear me?
Great.
Perfect. Um, yeah, so Kalisa Wonky, I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Rogue Community Health. And um, you know, Alex invited me, I think, tonight to maybe just clarify or to give some. Background on kind of the the patient population that we typically serve, but certainly would be. Serving should we move forward with this um, venture in talent clinic? So um, about seventy five percent of our patient population that we serve. Is um, basically on public insurance, so that would be Medicaid um, and or Medicare. And um, about sixty four percent of our patient population that we serve is um. At or below one hundred and fifty percent of the the federal poverty um, line, so. We are definitely serving kind of those that that are definitely vulnerable and at most need. We also serve those that have no insurance. Um, and part of our mandate as a um, federally qualified health center is is that we actually cannot turn away anybody. Because of their inability to pay, so we see everybody that comes through our doors regardless. Of whether or not they they have the means to pay for those services. Um, and in kind of working with the talent clinic that's currently there, they outreach us um. Really kind of talking about the possibility of us joining forces. Um, they're already serving many um, in your community and. Really have the desire to not only continue that, but to expand their services, and so. Us really kind of coming on board would be able to bring a lot of the other services that we provide um, behavioral health, um, substance abuse treatment. Um, we have community health workers that that go out in the community and help kind of. Um, navigate people to the different um, resources that they need, so I think. Kind of the the mission and alignment that that they're currently trying to do there at the talent clinic. Um, certainly aligns with what we're trying to do, but that's just kind of a high level general background. Um, and didn't know if there were any other. Maybe specific questions that I could answer or, you know, anything in that regard.
Um, well, I'm just going to ask the specific question I asked last time. Um, and that was um. What? How the um. Migration of talent clinic. Case load or patient load would change this mix that you're talking about, like is there? Do we have data on the clinic's? Patient load? In uh, in in the same. Vein is uh, you know, who what percentages served on Medicaid? Uh, what is the um? Uh, what is that? Is that LMI? Is that LMI? Uh, one hundred and fifty percent? What was that?
Um, no, it was a hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level, and I was actually going to ask the clarifying question because I I I am familiar with those. Um, levels in healthcare, but I don't know how to crosswalk those with um, another metric we're used to using, which is um, area median income.
I'll take your question in a second. Okay, um, so. I just I I just want to see how they stack up against the uh, the mix that you have. For a lack of better understanding of what you guys call it in in your industry, and then. Yeah, um. I would assume that the can't turn anybody away. Doesn't change.
Yeah, that is correct. I mean, we we don't uh, turn them away. I mean, partly that's just part of our mission, but partly that's our mandate. Um, the talent clinic, I think that's just kind of part of who they are and how they operate. They really do try to make sure they're taking care of everybody that that comes to see them for care. As far as the data, I think, you know, our tracking of data is probably um, a lot more specific because of some of our reporting requirements than theirs. Um, but from, you know, our conversations and as we've looked at this together, they have probably a higher population of Medicare than Medicaid, and we're probably the opposite. We have higher population of Medicaid than Medicare across our entire system. Um, but the migration of that is is on both of those providers. There's two um, kind of that will remain in that clinic um, would be coming on board with us, and all of their current patients would. Would be coming with them, should they so choose. I mean, patients always have a choice, and so I don't. I think that as far as the the mix that's currently being served in talent, that will continue, and actually, what we hope to do is be able to offer more capacity and more services. And welcome in anybody else who would be seeking service.
So I think the challenge that I'm going to have from this discussion is that it doesn't really answer that question that we asked last time, and that is just like, what is there? You know, I mean, so the purpose of this building um. Is is um. Has been already kind of spelled out in. In when we asked for the grant, and it's really for low barrier services. And um, so without knowing uh, what the migration is going to be from talent clinic. Um, and I I I, as it turns out. Uh, I do know patients that use the clinic that probably wouldn't fall under any of these. Classifications, and so I there is a concern, and I don't think we have an answer here tonight about the impact that the migration of their patient load would have on that. On this uh, this low low barrier mix. Uh, that's just for, again, being ignorant, not knowing how you guys classify that. Um, that's just the best language I can come up with. Um, so I just want to say that as I hand this off to councillor Penamorif, unless you want to, unless you heard a question there that you want to answer.
Yeah, the only thing I think that maybe I'd want to understand is is when you are, you know, using the terminology low barrier um, at. That you feel like might not fall in that category, um, you know, I guess I'm not really clear in what that might mean. I don't know if that is. You know, language barrier. I don't know what what that might be um. To be able to better answer that if I can.
Yeah, it's just a um, it's just a really general term for, you know, lower income. Uh, it might be part of that hundred and fifty percent poverty level, that seventy five percent of Medicaid. Um. And so uh, who would not fit in that in my mind would be people that are, you know, have. Um, full level insurance, um, above median income. Salary, you know, uh, household income, that kind of thing, so um. And again, we don't, we don't have the data from, I I think at the end of the day, it's really just not having the data from talent clinic. Talent clinic and seeing how that lines up with the. With the way you serve the community.
Um, yeah, I can see that. I think I I think from my perspective is is so the talent clinic would actually. Come under the umbrella of Rogue Community Health, and so they would be obligated to serve all populations that we serve, which is. Everyone and kind of all of those barriers that you're speaking to. Um, and and how we kind of address all the different kind of levels is we have sliding fee scale, so it is based on whatever their income is. We slide down our fees to match that um, to reduce the barriers as much as we can. Um. So I think I, as far as their data, I'm not sure kind of how their data plays into it, but because they'd be coming under our umbrella, they'd operate under kind of the structure that we have, and so. That is about reducing barriers to care.
Okay, I'm going to take questions in the order that I saw hands go up, so it's going to be.
Sort of just the follow up to your.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'm just, maybe I missed it, but. In Rogue Community Health, do you guys not take people who have insurance? You only take people who are in Medicare, Medicaid, or or don't have any insurance?
No, we take all, so we take commercial, you know, private insurance, we take uninsured, we take the public insurance, and so it is the entire gamut. Um, and so obvi- you know, obviously, kind of our higher portion is um, more of like that Medicaid, Medicare, but we, you know, we take all of the insurances, Blue Cross, Pacific Source, all of it.
Okay, so I had councillor Penamorif, then I had Colay, and then I had Medina.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you to um, crosswalk uh, the federal poverty level with area median income. I mean, I did look up real fast what. Uh, the federal poverty level is um, fifteen thousand something for a single person household. Um, so at a hundred and fifty uh, percent of poverty level, we're talking about Medicaid. Population, probably, I'm guessing.
Yeah, and I mean, that was just kind of like that, kind of from hundred and fifty percent down, but we do crosswalk to what the federal register puts out every year. And then we base kind of our sliding fee scale off of that, and we give different um, fees based on that, and so we're. We'll cover anybody anywhere on that that federal poverty line. Um, it's just kind of how we bucket it. It's really about reducing barriers, and then obviously, the more income you have, then there's a little bit more, but we do it incrementally.
Okay, and can I can I follow?
Follow up?
Um, it's not really a follow up. I I think that um. You know, the the idea of serving everybody, um, even people with insurance, but the reality of it is if somebody comes in and, you know. The the practice is already fully booked out, there's a waiting list, right? So so when we're talking about, you know, serving. There's the mission, there's the statistics, but then there's also um, what's happening for real on the ground? Will will somebody who we we call it underserved person be able to walk in and be seen in a reasonable amount of time with the the that purse? Would you have the with with this um, juncture? Joining of these practices and taking the patient load? Um, would you be able to continue to offer these service uh, medical services to uh, folks in need in a in. In a reasonable time, or would it that it just be a capacity issue?
Yeah, I think that's a really fair question. I think capacity issues are the the reality that we're all living with in in Jackson County. Right across the entire valley, and um, I think what we're talking about is is that the talent clinic. Um, or, you know, have the capacity that they have, so, you know, they would continue to do that. We would be coming in, um, hopefully continuing to grow the capacity there in talent. Adding some additional providers to what's happening there, so can we resolve all of the capacity issues? Realistically, no, but trying to improve that, and we do have um, same day appointment slots that we try to reserve for those really urgent needs and trying to get people in as quickly as we can.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Councillor Colay?
Yeah, thank you for that. One of my questions was about wait times. I appreciate you answering that. Um, my other is kind of tied to that around. General viability of this endeavor. Um, I know that Rogue Community Health has talked with the talent clinic. About if Rogue Community Health were to move into this building, um, them taking their patient load. Has Rogue Community Health examined what it would be for you all to just operate this facility? Yourself, would that put talent clinic out of business? Do they not want to operate in the same town if if Rogue Community Health was to be in? Or maybe are they able to not? Not able to operate in the same town if Rogue Community Health were to move in, and on the other side of that. Without the talent clinic's additional caseload, would it be a viable um, endeavor for you all to be in that building just yourselves?
Yeah, yeah, I think if I understand your question correctly, for Rogue Community Health, would we be able to operate there um? Without kind of joining forces with the talent clinic? Um, resource wise, yes, I believe so. Um, our interest in talent came about because we were actually outreach by the talent clinic. They outreach to us and said, hey, we would like to expand services. We don't currently have the resources to do so. You know, would you be interested in basically kind of helping us do that? And so our interest was never to come in, kind of push them out. Right, that type of thing. It really came about because of the conversation of them outreach to us and saying, can you help?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other uh, count? Let's see, councillor Medina?
Yeah, thank you. Um, my question was also about wait time, and I'm really glad to hear that you have same day availability, like for really urgent. Um, patients who have urgent needs. My question is, do you have to be an established patient? To get one of those slots, or is it just someone who's like, hey, I haven't seen the doctor in forever, and I really need to see one right now? Um, how does that work?
Um, so currently, it, yeah, so you're kind of talking almost like an urgent care kind of a situation. So we will take um, new patients um, in, you know, sometimes in those urgent situations, but we do, you know. Try to establish them during that, so we're not really operating like an urgent care where it's just kind of like, hey, you have your regular doctor, and then you can come to us just for an urgent care need. Um, but we don't necessarily block people from using those same day services because they were previously established, if that answers your question.
Councillor Colay? Oh. Did you did you have another question?
Yeah, I did. Um, this might be for both the city manager um, and you as well, but um, can you just speak to how? Um, the facility will operate alongside the food pantry that will exist in there, and if there is any sort of potential. Opportunities for collaboration, or if the food pantry is really just going to have their, you know, area and distribution. Kind of separate from Rogue Community Health, or how you envision that working?
Yeah, so I think a couple of things. Um, you know, I think the logistics of what that looks like um, is something that uh, you know, staff and I are still working out, but. Um, I have, I can tell you that we do have other agreements in place with the food pantry in and other of our locations across Jackson County. Where um, they do come set up on our clinic sites, they kind of operate their thing, and so we are offering that at other places currently to them. Um, I think that is part of the discussion. I've already met with that group, um, talked about what it could look like, kind of their needs, what's kind of space that they would need carved out in that building. So I think as as far as them having a place to operate, um, that is very doable, very much in line with what we talked about. The collaboration, I think, really comes with our community health workers. Our community health workers are out meeting people where they are. And and trying to figure out what they need beyond kind of primary care and navigating them, so a lot of that has to do with food insecurity. And so our our community health workers are helped navigating to things like the food pantry.
Thank you.
I just have a couple more. I I I have a couple comments, and I. Uh, if it doesn't. They may lead to questions, and I that's why I don't want to. Wait till Kalissa's done in case she can answer. Some of them, but. I mean, I'm just going to speak for myself that my concerns remain the same, and um, I, because we don't have the data from talent clinic and. And because we have, because talent clinic approached um. Rogue Community Health, and we knew that, we knew that, at least I did. I don't know. I also don't know if we've had any good discussions with our clinic as well, um, but. Excuse me. Um. I mean, I I just remain concerned that moving a patient load from. From a a a facility that. Entertains regular business in a way that. I need some water, but I need. Mine for that. Um. But that, um, thank you, Hector. Um. I have a question that you want to take a break? Do you want to pause a break? Yeah, sure. Give it. Come drop? Now that would work.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, um, it's kind of along with the, uh, it just reminded me of an of a question that might be related to where the mayor was going. Um, so when you said, the picture in my mind I got when you said that the that the two physicians were going to bring their practice over. That would essentially occupy those two physicians, but you will have additional physicians. I don't know how, I'm going to say three, just to make it more than the two, um, who will then be able to. Um, you know, uh, take care of their own patients. Because the facility is big enough to see more than two patients at a time, obviously. Um, so that the practice will be big enough to absorb um, the talent practice as is with whatever mix that is. And that the the practice, the practitioner that you'll bring will be, you know, like more. More than those two providers, so it'll be more than fifty percent essentially. Of of the practice will be folks that will be coming, it'll be your regular clientele and folks you outreach in in to in talent through your programs. So it, um, you know, I mean, we keep saying Medicare is a thing, and Medicare doesn't tell us really anything about. Um, federal poverty level or AMI, but I think um, and I think your clientele. Um, and and I really, really appreciated hearing, uh, as councillor Medina mentioned, the idea of of. Seeing folks who are walking in, seeing them right away and and establishing them. As patients is is a tremendous service, and is I think it's very much in line with what we're looking for. But the the struggle that we've had is because the combination, we weren't sure of the balance. And I was so I was wondering if you could, I mean, in my mind, I could say like three to two, I was. Wondering if you could speak to what you anticipate the balance between um, the percentage of that would be the talent practice folks. Uh, clientele versus um, the uh, the folks, your folks. Um, what would that mix look like? Would be like fifty fifty, twenty eighty, what?
Yeah, I see that probably, I mean, growing over time. Yeah, I see that probably, I mean, growing over time, it's going to really depend on kind of the needs of the community and really who kind of starts seeking care. But I do see that kind of growing over time and really starting with those two physicians, although I do think they're going to be able to probably increase their capacity. We bring in support staff that they don't currently have that allows them to just have more capacity just in that. Um, and then us, um, really bringing in additional physicians on top of that, really probably up to another two. And so, you know, probably doubling the size of what they're currently doing. Plus in looking at that space would have the opportunity, bring in, um, a behavioral health clinician, which they don't currently have. So we'd be able to also expand into kind of the behavioral health space, um, which is something that they're not currently serving. So that would be a whole new kind of population or probably some crossover maybe from those currently seeking, um, primary care.
But we could, but you could also do that if Talent Clinic wasn't the partner as well. Is that right?
Correct.
Um, Counselor Colley?
Yeah, um, do you all offer in-house pharmacy services? Just thinking of, there is a existing pharmacy in the parking lot and I would imagine that they would be unhappy if a publicly funded building was cutting into their, their business?
Yeah, in some of our locations, we have pharmacies embedded in our locations. Um, but I think because of that pharmacy, we actually have a contract with them. They actually, um, participate in some of our 403B discounts. So, um, sorry, not 403B, 340B, excuse me. Um, so our 340B discounts. And so that is not, you know, we're really mindful of those partnerships and those relationships we currently have. Our interest would not be to try to come in and take their business by any means.
Thank you. I wasn't assuming that, but I really appreciate that answer. And it's great to know that you already work with them, especially considering pharmacies are dwindling in the valley.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I'm all better now and, uh, I have my comments to make. So, um, I, 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 I think we know, uh, based on this conversation, or at least relatively know that, um, Rogue Community Health could do this with or without the Talent Clinic. And I just want to make sure, first of all, you know, all respect to Talent Clinic. And I know the providers, they are wonderful, wonderful providers. But, um, the, the fact that the clinic has outreach to Rogue Community Health in order to make a partnership, really what we're looking at is two organizations in one spot. It, it sounds to me that they'll make some sort of contractual agreement and, and, and work towards a common goal, but it is a patient kind of mix from Rogue Community Health and a patient mix from Talent Clinic. And I just want to make sure that we have some understanding of what we're migrating over to that, over to that facility. Because I think, you know, we, we, we went through a long process and we've gotten far down the road, uh, to, to create something, um, that benefits a, a certain sector of our community. Arguably, people that have that kind of, that kind of resource with, you know, those kinds of insurances and Medicaid and, you know, good transportation and all of those things, um, can have an easier time being on a waiting list than somebody who's not. And so, I, I, given the compression that the medical industry has in the Rogue Valley, there's waiting lists everywhere. And, um, I, I, I don't think, I think we would be falling short of our responsibility to this facility if we didn't fully understand who all is going to be in that building and what patient load they're bringing. So I don't think it would, I mean, I don't know, but I think it's worth the investment for a little bit more time to at least reach out to Talent Clinic and find out what, what their plan is. And, um, and what their, uh, uh, yeah, what their patient load is that they're bringing over. And, um, I just want to say for the record that, um, up until the point that we got this, uh, this community building as a resource for, for, uh, underserved populations, we've had inquiries from, uh, from other organizations about wanting to be here. So we know that there is a demand here. And at least the, at least those who have made inquiries about being here recognize that there's a demand here. They've never gone any further because we really didn't have any place to put them, but now we do. So did we, did we have that discussion with the Clinica? Did we, you know, um, or did it just, did it just, we went straight to Rogue Community Health for this partnership because Talent Clinic reached out and set this all up? I want to, I want to know. Again, I know the, I know the providers, they're a great organization, but I think we have a responsibility, given the fact that there is so much waiting list everywhere, that, uh, we're doing the best and the highest, um, for the purpose of this building. So I'm, I'm, I'm in support of getting, getting information from Talent Clinic, which is kind of assuming with respect, I assumed that's what we were getting tonight. We're not getting it tonight. Maybe we need to get it from Talent Clinic. Counselor Penomarif?
Yeah, um, so I just wanted to, um, ask you, Kalisa, to go back and you said that the Talent Clinic folks would be under the umbrella of your organization. So that, uh, that means they need to abide by the rules and the mission, not turn anybody away. Does it also impact, um, how they're compensated?
Yeah, so I just, I, you know, I want to, I want to be clear. So what, um, what the, what we are moving towards is, is that Rogue Community Health is actually buying out the Talent Clinic and both of those physicians will actually become employed by us. So yes, therefore they would have to abide by our rules because, right? They would actually be employed by us and not a separate entity. And we wouldn't be running like a partnership within the same building. They would actually be part of Rogue Community Health.
Counselor Penomarif, you have?
Yeah, um, and as far as, um, the benefit to, um, to, to your, um, Rogue Community Health, um, of taking on, uh, the patient load, how does that, how does that benefit? How does that benefit you, making you a healthier organization? Does it?
Um, I think that they, um, that those two providers have a, a population currently, um, that we are not currently serving. Obviously they're getting served by those providers, um, you know, kind of from the talent area. I think that what they're doing and what they believe in, um, aligns with us. And so it makes sense. But our feeling is, is that we were not trying to come in and kind of boot them out, but they, that they really wanted to come under our umbrella so that we could offer kind of more of that stability and resource that they can't do on their own. But we believe that we could actually grow, um, in what we're able to offer here, that the services grow, that the, um, number of patients being served, not only in talent, but I think it would probably, you know, draw from kind of the outskirts a little bit. Um, and that that possibility is here. And talent is growing, I think you all know that. So I, I think if this is a, a long-term, you know, thinking ahead of what the needs might be, um, in this particular community.
Thank you.
I just want to add, um, I sus, I, I actually suspect that the answers would be satisfactory from Talent Clinic, um, just because like, again, I know the providers and I know their history in, um, one in particular, um, that I know has long history in providing to underserved community and including with Rogue Community Health. But, but I, I, I just feel like we need to know the information. And, um, but, uh, this is, uh, you know, that's just, that's just, just, just my feeling. I recognize that. All right, are there any more questions or comments? Uh, Counselor Colley?
Yeah, I just have a question for, um, Alex about just reminding me where we are in the selection process. I was not at the meeting where the priority candidates or however you want to put it, were selected. So is this an information gathering phase about a candidate that's in the, in the already, like in the review phase or?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Give me a, a chance to answer, uh, part of the, one of the mayor's earlier questions. So, um, we, we put this opportunity out as broadly as we could through, um, multiple networks. And so we did receive applications from, I think about six or seven organizations. And, uh, so the council, um, staff recommended this, this application as scoring best against the criteria that council had provided or signed off on. And council preliminarily select, uh, sort of preliminarily, uh, approved them. And so, um, with some questions that we've been endeavoring to answer. And so I, it is, and I answered my question last.
Yes, just to kind of follow up to that, does the Talent Food Pantry slash Access count as another tenant? And does Rogue Food Unites count as another tenant? Or are they, how are they described in this kind of agreement and selection process?
So yes, there was, there was a, a, um, it was, there were two parts. So there were sort of the food providers were invited to apply and, um, the other category was invited to apply. And so, um, Access, um, did, did apply, um, and, um, were essentially selected. And, um, and so one of the things that I've been talking with, uh, Kalisa about is, does it make sense for their use, for them structurally lease-wise to essentially be a sub-tenant to Rogue Community Health? Or does it make more sense? I think Rogue Community's health's preference is that we have a direct legal relationship with Access rather than, than essentially being a mandated sub-tenant. That is kind of a awkward, a situation legally. So, um, so yes, Access was also selected. Rogue Food Unites, um, I, is, really operates, uh, outdoors and, um, believe, uh, and honestly, I don't even remember how far we got down that, that conversation, Kalisa. They, they, they're already, they already got approval from Asante to, um, they are there outdoors. And I'm guessing, I'm assuming, or we've already discussed, I don't, honestly don't remember, that Rogue Food Unites, you know, using part of the parking lot is, uh, something that Rogue Community Health would support as well.
Yeah, I, I feel like I remember that being discussed and I have seen them operating there. I just couldn't remember how they fit into the kind of management structure of that building. And I know the parking lot is partially owned by multiple other entities as well. So there's probably more there. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay.
May, may I ask a clarifying question about the direction from council?
Sure.
So...
There isn't any, by the way, yet.
Well, sorry. Sure. So, um, happy to, of course, um, uh, the council wants to see it. You know, whether it's material or, or not to the decision, right? I think it's a reasonable question. I do want to, um, pose, I think there's a definitional thing that I misunderstood. To me, low slash no barrier is an organization that doesn't turn anybody away. It's not that they don't serve people who have the ability to pay for their services as well. Like, so that, that's the definitional operation that I've been, or, yeah, that's the definition that I thought we were working towards. But it sounds like...
Well, I want to address that if I may.
Yeah, of course.
Because I think that's a really great distinction. And really what I'm saying is I know that Rogue Community Health is that organization. I, I'm not positive that Talent Clinic is that organization. And so by bringing their patient load over, um, will really, we may, you know, that may change the way that particular facility operates to some degree, or maybe even just temporarily. So, um, I, I, from, from my view, like if Talent Clinic applied for this place all by themselves, I'd still be asking the same questions. I'd still be asking the same question.
So, um, if I, if I may.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If Talent Clinic had applied for, by themselves, I, I, they wouldn't have been eligible. I, I wouldn't have brought them to you. They're not a nonprofit. Um, and so I think, so that is just part of your question. I think the first part of your question is best directed to Kalisa. Like, does, how does it change? I, and I think she's answered that it doesn't change how they would operate. It does mean that they'd have a client, sort of a built-in client base that they'd be working from, but that it will be operated as a Rogue Community Health clinic. It will be.
I, I, I understood that from earlier answers. Yeah, yeah. I appreciate that. Counselor Colley?
Yeah, I, I understand the concerns and I'm always appreciative of getting more information. So I'd be interested in hearing more from hopefully the Talent Clinic about how that would, how that would affect the situation. I am wondering though, I understand where the concerns are coming from, but I'm wondering if, if we didn't know what we knew and say we approved Rogue Community Health and there wasn't this already kind of, I don't know if it's a deal or however they're seeing it as those two entities. But if hypothetically, we didn't know this and we approved them and a year from now, Talent Clinic decided to sell their practice to Rogue Community Health and those, um, prac, practitioners moved in, we wouldn't have a say in that correct? Because that's just a private business, making their decision and deciding to move in. Because, because they're not making an agreement with us as the city. They're making an agreement with Rogue Community Health.
Really good point.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how our...
I, I just want, you know, the decision this council made was we would have input on the initial, um, on the initial occupation of that building. And, um, I'm not so concerned about the deal structure that they're proposing. And I, you know, I can't have this conversation without just like saying time and time again, I know the organization, Talent Clinic. I suspect the answers are going to be satisfactory. I know the providers are the best. But what, what we are talking about is moving a for-profit organization into a nonprofit space. And I think we have a responsibility to have some information about that. And, um, again, I suspect it'll be satisfactory because we're one of the lowest income, um, cities in the region. But I also know that is because we have some of the lowest income population and we also some, some high, so we balance out that way. So it's important for us to, I think, take a look at this. Anyway, that's, sorry, I don't, I realize now I'm becoming a little bit argumentative, so I'm going to just like keep my, uh, my replies to myself. But that, that is, I, I'm glad I had that opportunity to just state that last thing. All right, uh, Counselor Fasitso?
Well, as you guys have been talking, I was wondering, you know, if, if upon moving into this building, essentially a talent clinic doesn't exist, the providers there are now working for Rogue Community Health. And their patients can decide to go there or not go there. Essentially, even if their patients are coming and they're paying insurance, where that money's going and how it's being used within Rogue Community Health would now be organized the way they want to do things. And over time, you know, those two practitioners have so many years, they're going to be practicing and then they're going to retire. And I know, I'm talking to them, part of their concern is having continued medical care for the patients they are seeing in the community because, you know, they're going to retire at some point. And, and I, and I've asked them, they do, they see a lot of Medicare people already and they try not to turn people away. So it just seems like it's a fit and the initial transition will be maybe not the same. Well, it might be exactly the same as if the Rogue Community Health moved in and got some practitioners from somewhere else in the Rogue Valley and their patients decided to follow them to that clinic.
Yeah, all of those, so true.
But I do understand, you know, I think the optics of having the information is valuable.
Uh, Counselor Penomarif?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of the things that both you and Dave have been saying. I'm, I, I had the concern that, you know, the, in practice, while theoretically it was on mission, in practice, you know, there, it wouldn't be on mission just because of the patient, um, population. I, I'm, I'm, you know, the fact that these folks are going to be working, uh, they'll be employees... I, I'm, you know, the fact that these folks are going to be working, they'll be employees, they'll be under the same rubric, they'll. I think, and I think it's hard to like start up, you know, a patient population when you first come to town. So I think that I'm fairly satisfied at this point. I, I'd love to get more information from Talent Clinic, but I, I don't see any impediment to moving forward with this. From my point of view, I'm, I'm satisfied, I'm very excited about the behavioral health and the outreach that's been talked about. So I think this would be a, a real net positive for our community and I'm, and I'm satisfied that we're still on mission.
Councilor Colley?
Yeah, just a process question, if we were to wait to say the next council meeting to get a little bit more information from the Talent Clinic. Is that entering this deal going through, is it, is there, is there a timeline?
Kalisa, from my perspective, no, I mean, we're, we're just exchanged first rough draft of the lease. You know, if, if we were in a position to sign that lease sometime in October, I think that would be great, great progress. Kalisa, do you have any, anything you'd add to that question?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the same, you know, if we, you know, got to a place where we could. You know, be working towards having that lease signed. I know that there is some. The, the Talent Clinic, their lease on their current building is up at the end of December. And so there is some, you know, just kind of from their perspective, you know, trying to think about what they're going to do. But in the meantime, our conversations about what this looks like will continue. So perhaps by the time we circle back around to this, they'll already be part of Rogue Community Health and there won't be the Talent Clinic at that point, so.
Councilor Colley?
Just one more question about this process. How does this deal relate to the improvements that are going to assumedly happen with the building? And is there a timeline for that money to be spent? Cause that's part of the grant, correct?
Yes, so we're, we're nowhere near a deadline on expending those funds. One of the things that Rogue Community Health has suggested and offered is to contribute in kind. Labor design to those improvements to, you know, collectively to stretch those grant dollars to, to really maximize the benefit to the building. So that's one of the things that we've been talking about as well. Do we structure that within, within a single lease or should we do it a separate opinion for that?
Thank you.
All right. So. Yeah, I just want to say one last, one last time that I'm a huge fan of Rogue Community Health, a huge fan. And also a big fan of Talent Clinic, though I haven't used Talent Clinic, I have experience with one of the providers. And huge fan. So, you know, I, I, for me, it's just, it's just having a really clear understanding of what we're, what we're mixing here. And, and I don't think we have it. So if there is room to get some more information or maybe even have one of the providers here. I know one of them used to serve on, has recently served on the board with Rogue Community Health. So maybe he can bring kind of a, a bridge version of it. But I, what I'm, what I'd like to hear is what is your, what, you know, we have a clear mix of patient load from Rogue Community Health. And I don't know if the Talent Clinic has the capacity to prove, to collect and provide that kind of information. But that's as close to that as we can get is what I'd like to hear. Does anybody object to that?
Not, not objecting. I, I was just going to say, as far as the numbers, I mean, they should know the, the percentage that are Medicaid certainly.
Yeah, and understanding Medicare in the two.
Yeah, I, I mean, all of us, we're all Medicare at a certain age, right? Although I, I know there are providers that are difficult to bill Medicare, but I think, yeah, Medicaid. And if they have any other information along those lines, that'd be great.
Great.
All right, thank you, everybody. Great conversation. Sorry, sorry for those who are waiting that it went as long as it did. And thank you so much, Kalisa, for joining us tonight. Really appreciate everything you guys do and thank you for taking the time with us.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item six point, excuse me, seven point two. And that is the second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine nine two dash oh. To allow utility billings, fees to be adjusted by resolution and utility fee adjusted by resolution twenty twenty five dash one two nine dash R, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I could just acknowledge that. And that I think I was trying to answer the question as I would have thought about it on the last topic than necessarily as the council was thinking about it. So I apologize for that and I'm looking forward to further discussions. The, on the, this topic. You all have already done the first reading of this ordinance. The currently, there are a set of fees, water fees that are actually set in code. This ordinance will allow to take that language out of the code and say that council can change these fees via resolution. And so I'm requesting a second reading of that ordinance and then immediately following that. Requesting or suggesting the adoption of a resolution that would actually take advantage of that authority and adjust, adjust those fees for inflation.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Colley?
I move to adopt by a second reading ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine two dash oh by title only, amending title thirteen, public utilities and services. Chapter thirteen point zero five, water system rules and regulations and providing city council the authority to set miscellaneous water utility fees by resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt by a second reading ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine two dash oh by title only, amending title thirteen. Public utilities and services, chapter thirteen point zero five, water system rules and regulations and providing city council. The authority to set miscellaneous water utility fees by resolution. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Colley?
Yes.
Councilor Penamriff?
Yes.
Councilor Medina?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Parma.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. By the way, the water was, water's great, thanks so much. And I'll entertain the second motion, Councilor Colley?
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash one two nine dash R.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash one twenty, one two nine dash R. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Colley?
Yes.
Councilor Penamriff?
Yes.
Councilor Medina?
Yes.
You though?
Yes.
Councilor Parma.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven point three is acknowledgement of the noise permit for Day of the Dead race and community event. Councilor Colley, you had a question?
Yeah, my question's the same for both these coming items, but I noticed that there is a street closures on, on this permit. And I just wanted to check and understand with staff that there's the capacity to support those.
Thank you.
You're going to want mask or cheese or both?
That is the, the part of the reason that I.
Sorry, you're unmuted.
That is part of the reason I included the, not just the noise permit, it was to make sure that you all have the full context of what was getting proposed. So on the, as far as the Day of the Dead race. And I apologize that I didn't amend the application. The application was a little unclear as to whether they're actually requesting closure. And they are, they are not. So I should have, I should have amended that. In terms of the townscape classic they are. And they're requesting both the closure of Main Street in front of Old Town Pub. And John Street from Main Street to the, the post office entrance. And that is this, some, so very similar closures as would be taking place the prior weekend with the Harvest Festival. And we certainly had some discussion about that among staff. Whether or not, I mean, that does seem like something of a hardship for, for those folks in the area. On the other hand, we approved it for the Harvest Festival. So it seemed like. It seemed appropriate to approve it for this event as well. We haven't yet given them a price. We have, we have noted that there is, there is a price for that. And I think they're, they're aware that there's a price for that, but I haven't had a chance to, to give them that, that price and what that would cost in terms of city staff.
That was going to be my other question, so thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Acknowledge?
To acknowledge seven point, seven point three and seven point four. Councilor Colley?
I move to acknowledge seven point three and seven point four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge seven point three and seven point four, any discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Colley?
Yes.
Councilor Penamriff?
Yes.
Councilor Medina?
Yes.
Councilor Pesezo?
Yes.
Councilor Parma.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is item eight point one, and that is consideration of funding request for the Talent Skate Classic event, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as, as we discussed a little, or as Dave discussed a little bit earlier this evening. There's a request to council to consider a sponsorship of the Townscape Classic. I think the only thing that I would add is that there's, there certainly is budget in the council discretionary fund. And, yeah, I, I think that's all I have to add.
Do you know what the balance in the discretionary fund is?
Yes, I believe only two hundred and fifty dollars has been committed this, this fiscal year, is ten thousand dollars.
So there is ninety seven fifty, got it, okay. All right, any questions of staff? Any comments? And the request was for two thousand, I think originally, was it not?
Yes.
That, yes.
That's what I remembered from last one. Any, Councilor Penamriff?
Yeah, this is a, just a question. So is, I'm, I'm confused, this is, this is not a city event?
Correct, they have applied, they have applied for a permit.
Right.
But this, the, the request is not to make this a city event. This, their request is to offer a sponsorship similarly to other entities that have offered sponsorships, financial sponsorships.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to make the comment that my understanding of, of, you know, the, the discretionary fund is to. You know, our committees, commissions more towards city events. And also as far as the Harvest Festival goes, we're trying to break even, is that right?
That absolutely is our goal.
So, you know, these events, we're trying to not make them cost the city. So anyway, those are just some factors that I'm considering.
Other, other? Councilor Colley?
Yeah, my question kind of pertains to the, maybe you don't have an answer to it, but the cost of the street closure. And I'm wondering, is it anywhere comparable to this two thousand dollar request? Is it way less, way more? I have no idea for sure.
I think it'd be on the order of, it's an order of magnitude less. So it, we, it would require a public works employee or two being available early in, in the day to set it up and also to tear it down. So maybe, maybe we're talking about five hundred bucks, I think it's less than that.
And is there, there's no police needed to do the street closing?
No.
I just have a couple of comments. Again, I just want to say for the record that I, I am an employee of Talent Business Alliance and they are passing through the funds. We are not receiving any funds to TBA, so there's no financial benefit. But I have, I have listened in on some of the meetings and what I, what I want to say is what I, one of the, I think substantial benefits to our community. For this kind of first year, get them off the ground and get them rolling for what they are talking about, an annual event. And one of the West Coast's most like recognized cool bowls is that there's a huge potential impact. For our, our downtown businesses. And so, and, and it's not just, yeah, it's not just the, the same important group of regional people. But this will bring an entirely different demographic. And, and while I, I understand and agree with Councilor Penamriff's point about the, the, the typical use. I would, I would, I would say that chances are the, the record would reflect that there have been some, some uses that otherwise serve the, the good for the community in the past. So if I were, if there was a split vote and I was voting this, I would, I would allocate the full amount. And because I think that the, if they are able to optimize their budget to the full amount, I think they'll be able to get off to a great start. And I do think that this will benefit the community year after year. This is a unique event and I think, I think it'll be a big attraction. Councilor Colley and then Councilor Penamriff?
Yeah, is it okay if we ask a question of Dave?
You can just invite him up to the dais, that you're, you're allowed to do that with your council roles.
Can we invite Dave up to the dais then?
Dave, please, it sounds like there's some questions for you.
Anybody object to, okay, all right, consensus.
I didn't know I had that power.
Yeah. I don't know if it's by motion though, that would be an interesting thing to find out, but for now I'm going to take a consent.
Okay. You might have stated this in your comments earlier, but what is the overall budget of the, the skate classic?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
So this would be.
But that's not all cash, we're going to have, like I say, we're have a, a lot of stuff that's going to be in kind. But, you know, we're, we're at a threshold now where it looks like the event's going to be very successful. And, and the addition of the two thousand will put us right over the top. We are just now starting a, a group cloud funding as well. The website is up and running and we're getting a great response.
Awesome, do you have a guess of how many people might attend this event and how?
We're hoping, we're hoping to have five hundred people here for it.
Five hundred people and it's all day?
Yeah.
Yeah, Council Penamriff?
Did you say there was an entry fee?
Yes, it's going to be free for the kids, but for the adults and for the pros, they'll, they will have, have an entry fee. They'll all receive a T-shirt and the entry fees will all go towards the prize money.
And to just understand, that's not for spectators, that's for folks that are participating or.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm part of hearing.
So if I just go there just to watch, is there an entry fee? It's for participating or?
Yes, yeah, there's no fee to, to public.
Okay.
Yeah, it's for you then.
Okay.
I'm just going to ask a question, probably should have asked last time, are there any funds in the economic development? Give any economic development funds that? He's like, dang.
Well. I'm honestly not as familiar as I maybe should be with. I'm not aware that there's a line labeled that, in fact, we have our so ready bill. And I wasn't totally sure which line item we're going to be paying that out of.
Yeah, I thought, I did think, and, and you know, that just, I mean, I, now I'm just embarrassed to even ask this, but I did think that with twenty thousand dollars there. But I did, I did, I did think that Gary put it into the budget last year. At least he indicated that there was a economic development fund, but anyway, in, in case, in case that would be something to consider as well. Um, I do, I do think this is a powerful economic, economic development opportunity for, for the downtown. Councilor Colley?
Yeah, just one more question, is there going to be any sort of like printed material or advertising of who the sponsors of the event are? Like will it be shown as city sponsored?
Working on a poster now and I, I didn't put the package together, but you should have it, the sponsorship level start at two fifty and, and go up from there. And each of those, for instance, if it's. and go up from there, and each of those, uh, for instance, if it's five hundred dollars, your logo goes on the poster and on, on all of our websites, and that type of thing. And, uh, you know, we're, we're just, our sponsorship is increasing every day. I just got another two thousand dollar check today, so. Uh, we're, you know, we, we want everybody to know who's helping us and, uh, and that will be on the website for the twelve months, uh, until the next event as well.
Thank you.
I, I would add some information to that as somebody who just happens to know that so far, the cash raised is forty-seven hundred dollars.
And we have another two fifty that's pledged, that's just gonna be, should be deposited shortly.
Two hundred and fifty, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's still a gap.
And if I could, I just wanted to, Anna is, Anna is not here tonight, but this would not, this event would not be happening without her. She is an amazing person. Lucky to have her on here. Counsel.
And, and just for the record, she's donating her time for that as a parks liaison.
Mayor, if I could address your question, I, I believe the only line item that I'm able to identify with a quick search is there, there is five hundred dollars related specifically to the Economic Development Committee in the budget.
Probably should leave that just in case it starts up again. All right, and I'll entertain a motion. If there's no more questions, Counselor Coley?
I move to direct staff to provide a sponsorship in the amount of two thousand dollars for the Talent Skate Classic. Funds are to be provided to people, be provided through Talent Business Alliance, which is providing financial services for the event at no cost.
Second. We have a motion and a second, direct staff to provide a sponsorship in the amount of two thousand dollars for this Talent Skate, uh, Classic. Funds are to be provided through the Talent Business Alliance, which is providing financial services for the event at no cost. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Coley? Yes. Counselor Penamoroff?
Yes. Yes.
Eizo?
Yes.
Counselor Paramilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Hector.
Thank you very much, and we'll get your logo on everything.
Thank you, good luck.
Great evening.
It sounds like some-
Picture.
Sponsored by.
Uh, the next item is eight point two, which formerly was eight point five. It's the update to the street tree list. Staff report?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and we have, uh, Jane. Hardgrove, I was gonna say Hardgrove, so I'm glad I, glad I asked. Uh, Jane Hardgrove, uh, uh, from the committee here as well. Um, the, uh, there are three items, uh, included, uh, mentioned in the staff report. Um, the first is the street tree, um, the updated street tree, approved street tree list. Um, the, there are quite a few species that were added to the list. Um, this time around, a, a lot of those are, um, were added. Be, um, compatible with overhead wires. Um, and the, uh, I did actually also want to mention, we're, uh, taking some parking, uh, updates to Planning Commission next week for a work session, and, uh, we had the opportunity to clarify that these trees should be prioritized in parking lot plantings as well. And the, uh, the, the committee has been hard at work on a couple other documents as well. A, um, a, one that's, uh, essentially a trifle brochure, that's a, a top fifteen list. Sort of a, a good place to start for people who are wondering about what kinds of, uh, trees to plant, um, in their, on their property, uh, in, in their, at their homes, and then also a, um, a Urban Forest Community Education Guide that is an overview of both the benefits of, of, uh, the sort of environmental services provided by trees, um, the other benefits, uh, provided by trees, and a little bit of a how-to, um, on, uh, selecting and planting trees. And I think with that, maybe I should stop and, and, uh, and I suspect if there are questions, Jane, maybe better put the answer than I.
Are there any questions? Sign up really, really good work. Uh, Counselor Coley?
I'm just wondering if we want to invite Jane up to the dais, and if she has anything to, to say.
I'll entertain your motion. And you know what I, uh, I thought about after we had, um, gave up to the dais, I probably should have, I, without knowing, I should probably go to the higher standard, so I'm gonna go ahead and entertain a motion to relax the rules.
I move to relax the rules.
No, no, uh, and not, not relax the rules, um, to, uh, invite somebody up to the dais.
Gotcha. I move to bring Jane Hardgrove up to the dais.
Second.
Motion and a second to, uh, invite Jane to the dais. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Coley? Yes. Counselor Penamoroff?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo?
Yes.
Counselor Paramilla?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Um, I think it's in the charter. It's either in the charter or the council rules, and I'll, I'll figure it out afterwards.
I will too.
Um, just have, uh, just take a seat with us.
I'm hoping you all have had a chance to see those documents, that they were emailed to you. Is that, is that also true?
They're in the packet, yeah.
They're in the packet, good. So I just want to say the, um, fifteen trees was sort of, um, I'm just gonna call it eye candy. We just wanted to get people really excited about planting trees, and we wanted to give them some varieties of trees that maybe are not used so much, because we're always looking for diversity in our tree canopy. So it was like fifteen good trees, still eye candy pictures. And the, then the other one was, again, trying to educate everybody about the benefits of trees, which are, I know you all know how many there are. So then the tree list, we've worked long and hard on that and have culled and brought things back and forth, and a great many arguments in the tree committee, so we finally really got that clean and where we think it works. So, and also, I think that that document is, I think, you know, it's not set in stone, but we really do need that because we do see developments happening where trees that are not on the street tree list are being planted in some of the strips, and we just really want to get that baseline of the good trees, trees that should be reaching our goals of casting shade on a blacktop and, and all that sort of thing. Um, so I hope that you'll go ahead and pass those. We, we do a booth at the Harvest Festival. So we would love to have these printed, if possible, to sit at our booth. That would be really great. Other than that, I think, um, it is stated where we're looking for having them there at the planning department, and anyplace else where the city feels like they're good to have that little stack of printed documents that we'd love to hand them out too. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions.
Counselor Penamoroff?
Even though that would be killing trees now, sorry. I couldn't, I know. But not very many, you know, we, we, we planted a lot of trees.
You're on balance.
Yeah.
In good shape.
Really hard to keep my personal balance there, the committee does.
Alex, did you have something?
No, I, oh, I, I, that was just a joke. I, I did want to say, this is really a beautiful document, and it's educational, and it's easy to read, and I think it's a great idea to print it up and hand it out. I would even put some discretionary funds on that. Woo! Thank you.
If needed.
That's, uh, it is awesome. Alex, uh, could you also, uh, make your comments and then also comment on typically, just, just for all of us, how, how it's, how the, how does the street tree list get used, and how is it integrated to, into our city's development?
Sure, yeah. Uh, the, the comment that I wanted to add, um, in terms of distributing the, the list was, I think, a really good recommendation from the Planning Commission when they, they reviewed, reviewed it. Um, and that was to make it available electronically, so people could take advantage of the ability to filter and sort, um, and help them, you know, find the information here, because there's a lot of information. The street tree, uh, list is, uh, so when, um, in the course of, uh, the most common course of development of a city is, uh, is developer initiated. And so somebody comes into the city and they say they want to build a new, uh, commercial, uh, or, or, uh, building, or a new residential, uh, building, and then the city has requirements for, um, what that needs to look like and how they comply with our development standards. And one of the development standards in the city of Town, um, is to plant street trees. Um, and the code specifically says that they, um, must be from the approved street tree list. Um, I will say that, um, fortunately, there have been a few, um, uh, developments that I'm aware of over the past couple of years, um, where plans got signed off, where we didn't have the right trees. Um, one of those, we were able to correct with the, um, O A grant, so, um, so at no cost to the property owner, and in recognition that the staff didn't catch it, um, we've corrected that one, but, um, is it, and as I was saying, I think, um, I think there's a little bit of ambiguity in the code as to whether, um, the approved street trees are absolutely required in, uh, in equivalent planer strips within parking lots that aren't fronting the right away. I think we do want to clean that up and make sure that, that these are the trees that we, that we want to see in, uh, very similar locations and, uh, and park lots.
I second that. That's really a good point. Thank you for that. I think all of this will be on the city website electronically, so if they don't want to kill a tree, they can look at it. Is that true, Daniel?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask. My, my hope is that it would be on the city website, both in the planning department, but also on the urban forestry committees page, just as documents that they've generated, and to kind of understand the work they do.
Counselor Penamoroff?
Yeah, uh, speaking of the website, I'd also think it's pretty enough that we should, um, you know, maybe put it out on a press release or something, just to make folks aware. Um, and I know that, um, as, you, you know, when I rebuilt my house, and also the first time, it's, uh, the homeowners that are in charge of the landscaping, I had to pick my trees and get somebody to plant them and all of that, so I think it's good, more knowledge, the better.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Coley?
Yeah, I just wanted to state that I think, uh, city the size of Talent is really fortunate to have an urban forestry committee, and dedicated individuals who are incredibly knowledgeable about these topics, and volunteer their time to produce pretty excellent documents that'll be able to be used by citizens for quite a long time, and they're also almost done. All this will go with an urban forestry master plan that's, the city has not had. That'll come very soon.
All right, I just want to say, uh, on that point, that I get asked a lot, um, a lot out in the region, you know, just what is, what makes, uh, talent so awesome, so special. And it, I, I, my answer is always the same, it's the volunteers, it's the volunteer power that we have, and just the expertise that they bring to the table, and this is certainly an example of that. Thank you so much, and please relay our gratitude. These guiding documents stand to improve our community. Thank you.
I will.
All right. Uh, so with that, I think we had to, I think we don't have to, but I think I could entertain a motion to adopt this list. Counselor Coley?
Can I adopt them all under one motion?
I think so. Let me see what the suggested motion is. It's on page fifty-eight, I think, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, looks like it.
Okay. I move to adopt the proposed approved street tree list to replace the prior list adopted in April of twenty twenty-one, as well as to adopt the top fifteen suggested tree selections brochure, and approve the Talent Urban Forest Community Education Guide.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed approved streak to replace the prior list adopted in April of twenty twenty-one. Approve the top fifteen suggested tree selections brochures, and approve the Talent Urban Forestry Community Education Guide. Is there any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Counselor Coley? Yes. Counselor Penamoroff?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Eizo? Yes.
Counselor Paramilla?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector.
Finally say, we had a wonderful meeting with Gao Yang, and we're talking about trees around the skate park. Yeah, so trees coming probably from gateway. We were hoping to get around there, and, and it just was really fun and lovely to figure out where we could put those, so a really good use of some of those trees. I hope it's gonna happen.
That sounds amazing.
Thank you, Jane.
Uh, Counselor Penamoroff?
Yeah, was there a need for money for printing up the materials? Do you still have money in your bank?
I don't believe the Urban Forestry Committee has spent any of their five hundred, uh, yet, so I think, I think there's plenty of funds currently.
Again.
Thank you.
Item on the agenda is eight point three, which is Old Town Park Contract. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Um, I, uh, handed out tonight, um, uh, for your, uh, consideration, a contract, uh, with, um, uh, Steelhead Concrete Construction, um, to do the other elements of the, uh, of the skate park project besides the bowl. So on this second page, you have a little bit of a layout of, um, what this includes. The primary pieces are repairing some, repairing, replacing some sidewalk on the main street frontage. Um, adding, uh, a fairly large pavilion, um, backing up to John Street. A smaller pavilion that would be close to the entrance to the, to this, to this bowl, skate bowl itself. Matching grade and, uh, having an ADA ramp to, into the, uh, the bowl, repairing the existing pavilion, and, um, installing a retaining wall at the rear, uh, along with a, uh, hand railing where there's a pretty significant drop-off. And, uh, I think that's one of the areas, um, Gao Yang, uh, has been thinking about, um, having some additional plantings to, to sort of shore up that, that area where there is, there is, um, yes, change of grade. Um, the, uh, project, we reached out for, uh, three qualified contractors as an intermediate procurement for public improvement. Um, uh, Steelhead was the best responsive respondent, and, uh, and I'm requesting you authorize me above my spending authority to enter a contract with them to get this work done.
Any questions? Will they entertain a motion? Counselor Coley?
I move to authorize the city manager pro tem to sign a public improvements contract with Steelhead Concrete Construction LLC for Old Town Park slash Skate Park Project with a not to exceed amount of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager pro tem to sign a public improvement contract with Steelhead Concrete Construction LLC for Old Town Park Skate Park Project with a not to exceed of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen. Any discussion? Counselor Penamoroff?
Just a question, maybe you said, I missed, what's the timeline on this? When can we see, expect to see pavilions?
Yeah, so the, um, I'm not sure about the total completion. Uh, the, I do know we're planning on getting that, that ramp into the park, um, and some of those minor improvements done prior to Harvest Festival. Um, but I think the, uh, the larger pavilion piece will be after the Classic.
Counselor, uh, Coley?
And once those little improvements are done, the fencing, temporary fencing's gonna come down, because the project's basically-
The temporary fencing should co, I think, should come down before, even potentially before that, um, that, because-
It's not keeping too many people out currently.
It's not, so I'm not, yeah, I'm honestly not entirely sure. I think, I think they're done. I think we're just about ready to, to, uh, release their retainage, um, so I'm not entirely sure why we, why we do have it up, but I don't want to jump the gun either.
Do you guys sign off on that? When you, uh, like, is there somebody that's going, that goes to inspect the work, and then you sign off it before you do that?
Ye- yes, so there are a couple, but yes.
Okay.
There's-
Just in general.
Yeah, so the, usually the final steps of a construction project are a final inspection, a punch list, if there is any punch list for final items, and then once that's completed, typically there's a retainage. I think on that project, it's five percent, so there's, uh, yeah, to make sure you get the last pieces done.
Great, thanks. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, next item on the agenda is eight
We need to vote.
Trying to get us out of here on time. Okay, go ahead, entertain a motion.
We moved, we moved already, I think.
Yeah. I'm totally lost. All right.
I know, I know we had a motion, did we have a second?
Yeah, we had a motion in a second, we need to roll call.
Second was Perry Miller. Roll call?
Counsel Colley?
Yes.
Counsel Penamara?
Yes.
Counsel Medina?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Parilla?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thanks. Eight points. Eight point four is a discussion of the city recorder position description. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In the course of negotiations with the union over you doing janitorial, having janitorial service house be a contract, they requested the city consider offering senior quarter the option to elect a membership in the bargaining unit. And so I am requesting this was written, well, yes, I want to leave it as I am requesting the ability to to make that happen by creating a new nonconfidential city recorder position to which the city recorder could be appointed if you were to elect to do that.
I have a question about this and and in no means should this like uphold, hold up the the motion. But we asked at one point in time whether or not this would be specific to the current the current employee in this position? Or would this be in perpetuity? And I think what I heard and I want to confirm on the record is that this was tied to Hector Flores's position only. Is that correct?
That is the verbal agreement that Teamsters representative and I had that that this would not bind the the city in the future to not potentially hire a confidential city reporter in the future.
And so verbal agreements mean what, Dave?
Well, in the labor con, in the labor context, a verbal agreement is pretty strong. It's at least from the labor side. This one would be one where we we would be asserting that there was full agreement. And I'm not sure that it's quite as strong then. The point I'm trying to make is in labor discussions, when there's a verbal agreement by somebody from the employer's side who has apparent authority, that is almost always upheld. I'm not sure when it's kind of the other way.
Yeah.
It would be, it might be useful to have have that verified and confirmed.
So thanks, David. We we the this would result in a settlement agreement which we have not finalized language on. And so I certainly seek to include that clearly that that was my understanding as we negotiated this that 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 settlement would include some specific language that affect.
Okay, and I just want to say for the record, and I actually, I'm going to ask you to say for the record in the context of what a settlement agreement is when you're talking about the union, I don't want that to be misunderstood by the public. What we're, what a settlement agreement is when you're negotiating with the union. In this case, what is a settlement agreement?
It's in this case, it's specifically that the the union would be acknowledging the city ability to contract out for janitorial services, even though at one point it was a function done within the bargaining unit. And in return, the city had of the city recorder to to membership.
Great. So I I just going to clarify, in exchange for taking out one bargaining unit position, we're replacing it with another as a settlement for that. That's that's what it is, okay. Great, Counsel Penamara?
Yeah, so actually, in a previous life, I was in a bargaining committee for a union and yet I am very ignorant. So I want to ask, so if I were to be hired by the city to work in public works, I would be a member of the union. I wouldn't have a choice to elect. It's it's just covered, it's covered by the bargaining unit. So I would be a member of the union, is that right?
I I don't know that that's in some, in some senses, I think in some, there are, like, I think we're required to pay dues on your behalf. But I think you can actually elect to not be a member of. I think the simpler answer to your question is that that would certainly be the default. If you're a non supervisory employee, that that would be the default would be you be a member of the bargain.
Okay, I guess what's tripping me up a little bit is the idea that there's going to be a position where future applicants to this position would elect to be in the bargaining unit or not in the bargaining unit.
So what my understanding of of the agreement that Rod and I were talking about was that there's the specific individual who is currently in the position be offered the opportunity to elect, which then generated the need to change the position description because there are some some things that Hector could could not do in terms of participation in confidential bargaining. So that drove the need for a new position description. The way, the question that I asked Rod that honestly, I don't remember. It's possible that I did get this in the draft settlement agreement. I I it's been a couple of months since I looked at it. The question that I asked him before looking at that settlement agreement was, you know, is this going to lock the city in in perpetuity? The city recorder would always have to be in the bargaining unit. And and his response was, no, I'm willing to look at any number, a number of different situations. And so my understanding of that was that there finds a great opportunity elsewhere or retires in thirty years that the city would then have a choice of whether you're going seeking a confidential city recorder or a non confidential.
Can I follow up?
Yep.
So, but would Rod expect you to find another position to replace this? Because it sounds like that's, you know, he would be open to other options, but there would be another position.
I think that's what needs to be clarified.
Okay, so we're we're adding, we're permanently adding a position to them.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I I'm not, I'm not I'm I'm not sure.
It doesn't sound like it to me, if I may. Well, it sounds to me like we're leveling out. That's, I think that's the question to ask, is would we need to level again? If we were bringing the, if if that was one of the several paths that are being offered.
Okay.
I I I think what what I think if the agreement makes clear that we had the ability to hire a non confidential city recorder, that the union would not have grounds to object because they had already agreed to that. So the reason that the union had leverage to enter this discussion was was a change that they had not already agreed to. So this this I'm going to ask them to agree to this future change.
Yeah, that makes sense. Counsel Colley?
Yeah, can you explain what it means to act in support of executive session? What what this position wouldn't be allowed to do and how we would operate differently? Who would need to fill in, how that would work?
Yeah, so the the as far as the council is concerned, that means that Hector wouldn't be providing support through executive sessions related to collective bargaining. And I I believe the city reporter has at different times supported counsel through executive set, some executive session topics and some has not. So there would be a clear kind of executive session, the city reporter wouldn't be participating in. On the staff side, we have a weekly leadership meeting that we will need to slightly restructure. So we're we're not discussing labor labor items with Hector because that wouldn't be appropriate. But so those are the two permanent changes.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Because I think this is a really important point. So there are times where we have executive sessions that involve discussions about staff in general. Actually, executive sessions that are relative to either evaluations. I think there's two provisions, right? Evaluations is one, and then the other one is I mean, I suppose it could be, under some circumstances, it could be like litigation. And I think the council has the authority already to decide who participates in executive session and who does not. So and I think that's in charter. With that said, if we would, so with that said, I wanted just to make sure that we would not necessarily have to specify that in this job description. And just to make sure that we still are in a position that if we're having a discussion that we don't want any other staff to participate in, that that record would be kept in such a way where that it's not available to the city recorder. With all respect, Hector, so awkward when you're talking about somebody in the third party and they're actually in the room. But I, so we wouldn't necessarily need to specify it in that job description because we already have that authority. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then why does it have to be specified for bargaining? I guess because maybe that's part of the contract rules or something?
Look, I I think it's for the sake of clarity, the the folks who are confidential employees for by definition are not eligible to be members of the bargaining unit. And and that that was an activity that this that Hector has, you know, been available to do.
So last follow up question on that is, so then will you be setting up a policy or a procedure for retaining records that this position no longer has access to?
Yes.
Okay. So will we be able to, well, we don't need to see that. I think that's an internal policy, is it not? Or is that a, is that a policy that we need to?
I don't think it's it's one that you need to see, but the one that we could certainly keep you informed on.
Counsel Perry Miller?
Just Counsel Medina had her hand up earlier.
Thank you for that. Counsel Medina?
I put it down because we went on beyond the topic I had my hand up. It's just there was a question about if like you're automatically part of the union. No, they don't do that anymore. It's been many years. You have to opt into a union now. But you do have to give like, you know, the Teamsters access to a new hire who would be able to qualify into the union, to give them their whole spiel and everything like that. So that's the clarification that I was going to provide.
Oh, that was helpful. Thank you. Okay, Dave?
Could I just ask? The settlement agreement that you were talking about, will that come back to the council?
I
I I haven't thought about that until just now, but.
I will tell you that in the past, they always have. So just because it's been a practice doesn't make it a policy, but but I don't, they have, we've always seen the settlement agreements. I don't know that, well, to be clear about that, we've always seen the settlement agreements based on the bargaining. I don't know that it it's possible there were settlement agreements that we didn't even know about and they didn't come to us.
I suspect in disciplined cases, there may, there may be settlement, settlement.
That may be, but but this is not, this is not that type. What I'm thinking is this came about because the union raised a question that wasn't clear in the bargaining agreement. And when we talk about settlement, it's not settlement of a lawsuit or anything like that. It's clarification of of what we mean by the labor agreement when it's not itself as originally passed clear. But it does seem like it would be appropriate for it to come back. And that would be an opportunity for clarification of this very question. That is, you could vote on this motion tonight and still have a chance to understand what what the two parties mean in that settlement agreement.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Dave, for that clarification. Counsel Perry Miller?
Is it advisable to make a decision before we know?
Well, if you think about what the decision, the first, there's two parts to this decision. Create a position description. It doesn't mean that you would have, you know, we didn't, it doesn't mean you have to use that position description for the, you know, the successor to to Hector Flores, it just means you have one. And the second part of it is approved possible reappointment of the incumbent city recorder to that position. And possible meaning, it depends on on his wishes, I believe.
That's what I had in mind when I said possible was because all we committed, well, not committed, well, all all the requests from the union was was to offer Hector the option.
All right.
You got another hand from Rosario.
Counsel Medina?
Hey, so my experience with union has been all in education and I know there, I know how it works there. So my question, I guess, is let's say we were under a regular bargaining year. You guys came up with an agreement for a contract. Would that go to city council to be approved before you guys approved it? Or does the city manager have authority to approve it and then let the council know what happens?
I think I heard what you said. Butted a little bit towards the end of it, Counsel Medina, but I I believe the the question is when you have a new bargaining agreement, does that come to the council or not? And
At what point, I think she wanted to know. At what point does the council or does the city manager have authority to negotiate?
Yeah, like, so for example, like the like, does the city manager negotiate it? And then before everything finalized, brings it to the city? So we can be like, yeah, that's good. Or is he is he able to just say, yeah, that's good? And then let us know that this is what we did? That's like, I'm trying to figure out what the process is going like, as a city councillor, if that makes sense.
I can, I can just say what we've done in the past.
Well, I'd like to hear what you have to say, but my my opinion would be it does have to come to council.
Yeah, absolutely. And in the past, you know, the city manager and the attorney, it's would would just bring all the issues to us in executive session. And there might be several issues as we worked out all the points. And they would come to the council for direction and sometimes very specific direction on the contract. So 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 Counsel Medina, our experience in the past is we had like, you know, three or four several executive sessions working out the contract with with the the attorney or the city's attorney. An attorney hired specifically to work with the unions in the past and our city manager.
Okay, I got to follow up, if that's okay.
And in the past, and I don't know how consistent we've been, but I know that we've done it a lot. In the past, we appoint who negotiates. So we, so when the negotiations happen, when they start to happen, oftentimes, the city manager will ask to be appointed or the city manager and the attorney, and there have been times or the city manager and the attorney. And there have been times where we actually appointed a bargaining negotiator. Uh, I've seen all of that over the years.
The what, what, at least what I've seen in is when you appoint somebody to do, to do the negotiations and you do have some executive sessions to talk with that person about what you want, what the council wants to see out of those negotiations. And then that negotiator brings back a tentative agreement for council to approve. And it's clear at the outset in, um, that those negotiations are only towards a tentative, uh, conclusion.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's how I remember it too. And we do that in executive session. Um, okay, so, uh, our questioning has been good and we have a better understanding. And so if there is no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller?
I move to direct the city manager pro tem to create a new position description, city recorder non-confidential and approve the possible reappointment of the incumbent city recorder to that position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct the city manager pro tem to create a new position description for the city ma- uh, recorder, non-confidential. And two, to approve the possible reappointment of the incumbent city recorder to that position. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Pranamra?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is, uh, cons- uh, amend staff purchasing limit and discuss credit card policy procedures staff report?
Yes, please. And I'd like to invite our finance director, Dana Mason, to.
Uh, up to the dais. Thank you so much for your patience tonight, uh, getting, getting to your, your agenda item at nine oh four. Set through all that.
It's been interesting for sure. So, uh, good evening. Dana Mason, the union's director for the city, for the record. And before council, it's a recommendation to revise purchasing authority to allow the use of city purchase cards by the assistant finance director and regular full-time staff designated by, uh, department heads. The change provides employees with the responsibility of making small purchases as situations arise, such as travel and materials needed for immediate repairs. Um, employees who are assigned to P-CART will read and sign the city's purchasing card policy and agreement. And support for all purchases will be reviewed and approved by the employee's supervisor. Um, also requested is an increase in P-CART limits for the police chief and the public works director, five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars to provide greater flexibility during emergencies.
Any questions? I have one. Um, so I just heard you say that, um, first of all, I think this is, this is great. Um, but I, I heard you say that all purchases have to be pre-approved by the person's supervisor. Is that correct?
So for, this thing would nor, your purcha- P-CART is purchase cards. And this would give an employee the flexibility to go out and say, for example, a public works employee um, that needed to repair a fence, to go out and buy some wood or roots from a local hardware store. And then when they got their P-CART statement, they would attach a receipt to that. It would go to their department director who would review and approve that P-CART statement and purchase. And then, of course, it's a first of mine. And if there was an issue with an employee purchasing something that the department didn't like, they partied ahead. We just had a conversation with them and let them know that that purchase.
So direct supervisors, what I, so, um, I, I think I originally understood that this would be for department heads. Uh, is this going to be a purchase card for every employee?
For every full-time employee that the department head decides they can have that response though.
So the, having a card is with the authority of the department head. You don't get one if your department head doesn't say you need one?
Exactly, exactly. And they'll have to, we have a new purchase card policy that they would have to read and agree to make sure that all the purchases are from legitimate city business. What's happening now is occasionally some be my, they might get purchased. So that supervisor might have to go to the store, drop whatever they're doing and go to the store and make the purchase. So it's a, a way to give employees additional responsibilities and then also, um, create a time for supervisor.
And for the record, I just want to ask, I do, I do, um, appreciate this process. Uh, but for the record, what I want to ask is, do we typically have net thirty accounts with some of our, like, major suppliers?
So we do have a, a count with, with some suppliers, but those are, um, accounts where we would order it and then it takes a few days to, to come to us. We could set up accounts with local hardware stores, but that sometimes the internal controls aren't really great there because it's an employee, uh, finding their slip or saying their name. And then sometimes you can't see who it was. And you might have a stranger go in and use the same account. So that really puts that onus on the department or, or the hardware.
Yeah, and, and my experience is that they're not always consistent. So in your opinion, this is a higher control?
Yes, I think this is last.
Yeah. Um, and so you want to, uh, let's see, not you, the city wants to, um, provide each card holder with a ten thousand dollar balance now?
No, so the, the, the card holders would be, I think we'd be decided on a two thousand dollar limit for them.
Yes.
Did I just hear that wrong?
Page, page fifty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this. There it is. Okay. I thought she said ten thousand. I thought she.
Uh, that was for that, I would, we would like to increase the purcha- purchase card limit for the public works director and the police chief from five thousand to ten thousand. Just because if there's an emergency, that will give them a lot more purchasing possibility.
Okay, I just misunderstood what you said, so.
I did hear that. Yeah.
And, and so those, those sub-designated folks would have a maximum balance limit of two thousand and a maximum individual purchase limit of five hundred dollars or less as defined by the department head who's, uh, approving their use or approving their, the issuance.
Yeah, so the, the agreement would be signed by the department director and department supervisor. It would stipulate that the maximum purchase that they, they could have.
And.
Sorry.
Um, so, so, um, maybe nobody remembers, but we did have a city manager that did funny things with reward points and all kinds of fun stuff. And, um, so, uh, this is going back a long time ago. So, um, so is there a way, and here was the thing, like there was stuff, and actually this has happened over the years. There are things that can happen way outside of our, our ability to view it. And yet the, the community still holds you responsible for that, right? So is there a, um, and I, I get sometimes that's just unavoidable, but is there, i- is there a way that we could get some kind of report? That, like, is there like an easy report that could get produced as part of our financial report?
Out of here is, so we could separate P-CART purchases out, um, when we do the check report.
Easily?
But we could, it's, um, it's all in a spreadsheet, so it would be pretty easy.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Colley?
I would advocate to, to see that. That would be nice in the financial report if it's easy enough to do.
And, and as far as rewards, the city gets a rebate for all of its P-C- P-CART purchases. It's not a lot of money, but we do get a little bit of money back.
Good, and there's no, no possibility directly to us.
Yeah. To check this path and wait and consider this lady.
Great. Counselor Colley?
Yeah, just to understand the mechanics on this. So when it says, uh, say for the chief of police, moving it to a ten thousand dollar credit card limit, is that the same as like a personal credit card? We're like, that's per month or is that per purchase? And how is that limit, is it set on the actual card or is it just a policy that the city has stated?
So, uh, we have the ability to go into the, the credit card, uh, uh, portal online. And we can, uh, set the maximum limit for each card. And we can also set the maximum purchasing limit.
For a singular purchase?
For, for a singular purchase and then for the whole entire month. So until that card is paid off, they, they don't, you know.
Thank you.
Counselor Panamra?
Yeah, so, um, sometimes in this chart, sometimes the purchasing limit is larger than the credit card limit. I understood the purchasing limit there not to be, it to be the general, what, what that.
The purchasing limit is what the authorities, they would have to, um, to approve a, a contract or.
Apart from the credit card. Okay, that's clear then. Okay, thanks.
That was a great point that you brought up, Counselor Colley. And I, I wonder if, I mean, I've asked about purchase orders in the past. And you mentioned to me earlier that you have a great system for purchase orders in your, in your new software.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not our new software. It's our, the financial software that the city's had for, um, I think it's for quite some time. We've had a, we have a very robust purchasing module, but it just has not been used. And within that module, you can put in, um, you can set up approval authority. So, so, uh, an employee would go in, put in a requisition. Um, the requisition would be approved by their department head. If it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, it would go to count, go to Alex. If it was over fifty thousand dollars, it would need to be entered until council had approved it. So, and it is all electronic. So we're starting to put that, that whole process into place right there.
Well, my experience with purchase orders, and I'm, I'm wondering if there's ma- maybe a hybrid of this that could be thought about. Um, I, I'm not even, I'm not even proposing it. This, but my experience with purchase orders is that you might have a spending limit of up to ten thousand dollars on your card. But if you're making a purchase over a certain dollar amount, you have to have the purchase order signed ahead of time. And, um, I think there's a lot of value in that, especially knowing that, in other words, you can't just go out and make it, you've got a limit. You can't just go out and make a ten thousand dollar purchase. Um, you might have a ten thousand dollar limit, but it's, you can't just go out and get a ten thousand dollar purchase without a purchase order, for example. I'm just, I'm just pulling numbers. So my, I, I feel like there might be some room for considering some kind of purchase order limit. Um, especially given that if this is software, probably you're not, probably people have access to develop a purchase order from their desk.
They will. So we, they, they, they do, but it hasn't been utilized. So, uh, we're just, we, we found out a lot of stuff. But, um, but right now, the idea is that we will require purchase orders or requisitions for anything over five thousand dollars or anything that has a contract. So that way we can, uh, track the contract and make sure that the not exceed amount doesn't, we don't go look for that. So it's going to be a really good tool for us to track contracts and expiration dates and stuff like that as well.
Right. It sounds like you're already thinking about it. So I'm, I feel excited about that. And about your financial policies, that, the incoming financial policies that you mentioned as well. I think you mentioned that you, you were going to be developing some purchasing policies.
Yes, absolutely. Administrative purchase.
Yeah, great. Um, and again, for the record, so the public doesn't misunderstand, there has been purchasing policies in the past. They just, it sounds to me like you're refining them.
Yeah, it's been difficult finding. Um, we do have a purchasing policy or procurement policy. And that was very straightforward. We follow pretty much the state's, um, Oregon state law for it. But we don't have things for the, the, the small things like this, the internal policies.
Which, why I'm so excited about it is because in my experience, that's where all the troubles is. It's at small, it's at small level. It's not at the big level. People don't go out and spend twenty-five thousand dollars because that's what their limit is. They just, like, all of a sudden you see these funny little purchases that, you know, so I appreciate that this is happening. Um, okay. I'm excited about that policy. Alrighty, any other questions? Um, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Colley?
I moved to adopt, I moved to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty dash R, resolution delegating purchasing authority and establishing revised purchasing limits for city staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash one three zero dash R, resolution delegating purchasing authority and establishing revised purchasing limits for city staff. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Pranamra?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, um, six, eight point six, which is discussing the code compliance and citation and direct abatement procedure, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine nine five dash zero, uh, allowing code compliance officer ability to cite and providing city with the ability, uh, providing city the ability to enforce seasonal fire restrictions. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And I want to acknowledge that this is a lot to take on at this time of the evening. So, um, perhaps I could just intro- at least introduce the, the topic. Um, so the first item that I've brought to you all, um, just to primarily to share with you and also to, to, um, yeah, to see if there are concerns. It is a, um, a standard operating procedure that, um, that I've developed with the assistance of the department heads to, um, just clarify the steps that we, the, the internal steps that we go through to comply with the code. Uh, if and when we're moving towards either citing, uh, an individual, uh, for a code violation or, um, carrying on direct abatement. Um, and I want to acknowledge a typo, one of the, it's more than a typo. Um, in the standard operating procedure on page one, item two, one of the things that I wanted to up, that I updated since this was, that I updated very recently was to make clear that we need to account for the fact that our mail is running through Portland now. Um, so even though our code, uh, gives folks, uh, ten days to respond, uh, when we're mailing, uh, them notices, uh, uh, I think our practice would be to set that, that period out fifteen days. So they at least have ten days after they get the mail. So, um, anyway, the, the, there's, um, it makes clear who needs to approve different steps um, in the process. And, um, and it also, there's, there's the potential for an appeal, particularly of an abatement decision. So this is a, an appeal of a citation, citation. You know, of, uh, if somebody wants to fight a citation, they can go and do that in court. Um, if the city makes a decision to directly abate an issue, i.e. there is dangerous weeds and we're in extreme fire danger. And it's in a location that we really feel that the city's got to act on. And so we're going to act on it and remove those weeds. Um, the code provides for a notice of that individual and an opportunity to appeal. But the, uh, actual way to carry out that appeal isn't spelled out. So, um, that, those are the kinds of things that this, this SOP is, you know, fleshes out. Um, and then the, the other two, uh, sort of broader items that are discussed in the staff report. The first is making clear who has the authority to actually make a citation or write a ticket. And I, I, I will, uh, let you know that this, I started down this path in part, uh, out of a misunderstanding that, um, that, uh, that our, our PD was under, uh, chief was under the impression that our code of compliance officer didn't have this authority.
Did or did not?
Did not. Um, I, my reading of the code is that they probably do as the city managers designate. But I think, um, But I think um police officers, the Public Works Director, the City Community Development Director, and a code compliance officer could issue a citation. And part of the logic there of of more than just a police officer, for example, is if you ever go to court, the person who wrote the citation is the one who needs to appear in court. But if they're not the expert, if they're not the person who's been working with this individual, then it's kind of a waste of their time because you need the code compliance officer who has been actually following the case. So uh that that's so I think there's a clarity in terms of authority, and there's also a flexibility to make sure that the right person is is citing uh on issues that uh that may end up in court. And then the um the second thing that the proposed ordinance does is make clear that we can use that that same standard uh procedure in multiple uh for multiple code violations. Um, in some places, we have alternative processes um that I think we always want to have available our standard process. And in some cases, uh for instance, the um I think it was the um tree preservation and protection. There there was no specification of how of who actually had authority to cite a violation. So um I went through those those various locations in the code and um allowed us to use the standard process in uh in those other areas as well. And then finally, um the chief, uh we came across a situation this summer where somebody violated seasonal fire restrictions. And although our police have the abo- ability to cite somebody criminally for that, the DA is unlikely to prosecute. And so our police are unlikely to arrest and charge somebody because that's a big waste of their time um if it's not gonna get prosecuted. So um what I'm suggesting or requesting that counsel consider is providing um the city also the authority to cite as a civil matter of violation of those public of those uh fire seasonal fire restrictions. So we don't have, you know, we don't just have the nuclear option. We have a we have a a lower scale option. As I said, that's a lot to introduce at at uh this time of night, but I appreciate the opportunity to at least introduce these topics and um maybe get a sense of you all, which you might prioritize for for next discussions.
First of all, I want to say when I introduced the uh ordinance, I introduced it as um ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine nine five dash zero. Um, that's what's on the agenda, but I think it's oh for anybody who's making the making the motion. Any questions? I just have one quick question. I um I uh appreciate very much the idea that um s- staff members who cite who cite would be the ones that go to go to court as the expert and can answer questions probably best. But I do have a little concern about that uh that this this authority being so yeah, being so broadly utilized. Um, so, you know, I mean, can we ask for like a training manual to be developed or you know, something like that? Because I think, you know, citations are one of those things where un- uh ninety nine percent of the people handle with responsibility, and then you've got one person that's a little um I I just would I'd want to see some kind of some kind of training. So I don't want to call it sensitivity training, but like, you know, common sense practical training for for giving citations. I see the police department or, you know, Jen providing that training or or developing something, but um I just, you know, I just I don't think it's good for the staff to be on the I think this is gonna be this could cause heartburn in the community um to some degree, and I just I think if we can, you know, demonstrate that we provided training for this, then. Uh, Counselor Colay?
Yeah, where does the um code enforcement officer currently sit in the organizational structure? Because I think it's changed a few times, right?
So currently, um the the code compliance officer is reporting to me as the community developer.
Okay, but in the in the past, it has been under police, correct?
It it uh most recently, their immediate predecessor was, but that was because that was that there is a police employee that stepped into the role. I believe primarily it's been community.
Okay, gotcha. That's my under. Thank you.
Um, and Mayor, if I just uh I appreciate your comment. There there are similar comments at our our last department head meeting, I think, and it makes a ton of sense. Um, and I would also just add that the propos- the proposed ordinance actually limits the number of people because the prior code, you said city manager and anybody he designates.
Oh, yeah. Wow. I think that's objective.
Anybody they designate.
Yeah, that's subjective. All right. Any other questions? Uh, Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, maybe it's just because it's late, but my brain is trying to figure out if this is related to the study session that we had earlier.
It it's genetically related. Yeah, I mean, I I've been thinking about this night as sort of a code compliance, you know, to to try to get to a lot of different code compliance issues.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion to extend the meeting. Counselor Colay?
I move to extend the meeting no later than ten P M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to extend the meeting later than nine thirty P M. Any discussion?
Ten ten P M.
No later than ten.
Oh, I thought you said, okay, I thought didn't hear it all. Uh, no later than ten P M. Any discussion? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Counselor Paramilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're almost done, y'all. Let's let's push through. Um, okay, so if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion. If there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Colay?
My my question is based off of the discussion we just had, are there changes that need to be made? And based off of the comments Alex just made about
The typo.
The typo and authority.
So um so so I
Yeah, I think I'm finished on that, yeah.
Um, so in terms of the typo, I'm not ask actually uh asking you to adopt that's that SOP. That's just an interim document that I was sharing for your benefit. So I I think as long as you're comfortable that staff has heard the direction that anybody um who's being granted authority here needs some training, then there's not any amendment that's.
Counselor Colay?
I'm ready with the motion then, if you are.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, so Alex, can you repeat again? Did you say that the code enforcement staff member does have the authority to cite or in our current code they don't?
Our our current code says city manager or designate.
Okay.
So I I uh as as
So it's in
By this
Job title, but.
Yes, so so with with the city manager approval, they they would. Um, and that was just a confusion among staff. But that sent me down this track, but I think nonetheless, it was a good place to go.
And all of our officers also have the ability to cite?
Absolutely, yes. Yes. So, yes, what um, yes.
I am Ken McShin. Counselor Colay?
I move to approve by first reading ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine five dash O, Amending Talent Municipal Code Title Eight, Health and Safety, Chapter eight point one zero, Public Nuisances, Title twelve, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Spaces, Chapter twelve point three five, Bear Creek Greenway Corridor, and Title eighteen, Zoning, Chapters eighteen point nine zero, Site Development Standards eighteen point one hundred, Tree Preservation and Protection, and eighteen point one seven zero, Home Occupation, Delegating Code Citation Authority and Establishing a Violation of Seasonal Fire Restrictions to be a Public Nuisance.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve by first reading ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine five dash O, Amending Talent Municipal Code Title Eight, Health and Safety, Chapter eight point ten, Public Nuisance, Titles twelve, Streets, Sidewalks, Public Spaces, Chapter twelve point three five, Bear Creek Greenway Corridor, and Title eighteen, Zoning, Chapters eight point nine zero, Site Development Standards, eight point eighteen point one hundred, Tree Preservation and Protection, and eighteen point one seven zero, Home Occupation, Delegating Code Citations Authority and Establishing a Violation of Seasonal Fire Restrictions to to be a Public Nuisance. Any discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Panamriff?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And Counselor Paramilla?
Yes. Item eight point seven on the agenda is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine nine six dash O, and ordinance extending D L C D noticing period staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Um, hi- high level uh land use actions, legislative actions in Oregon um have to go through a what's known as a Papa uh process, and that is D L C D publishes notice when we're when um to to the state, when we are getting ready to change our development code in a significant way or change the comp plan. Um, they require us to give them thirty five days notice prior to the first public hearing on the topic. Our uh our city code requires that to be forty five days of notice, which because Land Commission only meets monthly can sometimes result in a month's delay of getting something started. So uh I'm I'm requesting that we um match the the city, I'm sorry, the state requirements.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Panamriff?
Oh, no.
You're not raising your hand?
No, I I'm adjusting my glasses. I can barely see it this hour. So I nominate Cola.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um, I move to approve by first reading ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine six dash O, Amending Title eighteen, Zoning, Chapter eight point one nine zero, Procedures for Review of Applications and Appeals, Reducing the Time Period Required to Notify the State of Oregon of Type Four Legislative Land Use Actions to Thirty Five Days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve by first reading ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine six dash O, Amending Title eighteen, zoning, Chapter eight point one nine zero, Procedures for Review of Applications and Appeals, Reducing the Time Period Required to Notify the State of Oregon Type Four Legislative Land Use Actions to Thirty Five Days. Uh, any discussion?
I'll that will correct the typo and the title. Legislature.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, any for any discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Paramilla?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, um, so we have committee and commission reports. Does anybody have uh we'll just take who who has a report that they want to give. Counselor Colay?
Yeah, just one little addition. Um, Alex happened to be at the most recent Urban Forestry Committee meeting, and it was brought up that there is a uh green infrastructure grant open right now through the state with a deadline sometime end of October, mid October. Um, just wanted to bring that before the council. Alex has information about it, but since we want to hear about I don't know if staff is gonna apply, but um could be used for a number of different green infrastructure projects that are needing to get done around town.
Are there infrastructure? Are you saying that there are infrastructure projects that are in the queue that are or? Yeah.
Yes.
That we could just identify projects that are already? Okay, great.
If I could clarify, the green green by green infrastructure, they mean specifically like natural, like tree trees and uh natural elements. So uh
Bios bioswells, things like that.
That's the my immediate thought was might might this be an opportunity to to uh move forward to recycling of water of the splash pad? That would not be eligible, but although it has beneficial effects, it's not actually green infrastructure. So um relocation of trees might be might be an option.
Maybe um maybe uh also like fixing the bioswells as well. I mean, they're uh somehow somehow the landscaping and the bioswells soils have somehow survived, somehow has not. And maybe something like that.
That was a suggested project. The gateway tree relocation was one, and there was some other.
I think the the it I think another one that we want to do that would not necessarily call qualify is adding the uh irrigation to the to the swales on ninety nine, the planters, the center planters trips on ninety nine north of Valletta. But
Okay, great. Any other reports?
I just had a question. What was it? There's some um city owned land. It's at Summer Place or something. Was that supposed to be developed into some sort of natural what land?
That's on the Parks Master Plan.
On the Parks Master Plan? Is it is it something that could use the scrap for? Maybe?
Could, yes, but there's probably more pressing projects like
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing.
It's just the south side of town sometimes doesn't get as much attention. That's just.
Good point. Um, all right. Anything else? Any 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 other committee reports? Um, okay, I'm gonna move us then to um other business, the look ahead.
All right, I think Mayor uh Hector's already provided with you um a piece of paper. The uh potentially a study session about the Gateway Hub. That may not be right for October first. Um, but I think at some point uh in the in the not too distant future that uh we should be having a discussion about possibly a a letter of intent or something similar between Tura and or the city on the one hand and Talent Business Alliance on the other uh as uh those both bodies jointly work on uh fleshing out the concept and also raising funds. The um we I do want to return to the Alameda Recovery Executive Order. Uh, I've got some data to share with you about your request of the number of lots that remain to be rebuilt and the potential conflicts with their uh with their with their adjacent zoning. Um, I'd like to do a quarterly check in on council goals with you all.
Right.
And we have that will be the right time to update our stormwater system development charge. And um we um we also would like to have a conversation with council in the in the future about Historic Town Hall. Um, both of really, um, I think the primary thing that I'd want to share with you all is a strategy for some public engagement um about future uses there. Um, one of the things that George um George Crayton, thank you, has pointed out to us is that uh having a clear identified use is gonna be very helpful for the remaining fundraising. And so I think uh figuring out our process to 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 affirm which direction that we're going. And uh and I want to return to a discussion about how we're tackling public engagement on budget, medium and long term budget. So um there's plenty to choose from there. I don't know that we've got time to tackle all those things, but um uh and then um I do also want to um talk about right away maintenance responsibilities with you all, both both serve some bits and pieces that the city seems to have picked up over the years that don't necessarily match code, but also the sanction that we have between um local streets and collectors. Um, so there's a lot that's falling on Public Works um as a result of that distinction. And then finally, the only other thing that I'll mention this evening is uh Ted Parker Wilton, do I have that right? Or Parks Commission Chair?
Ted Walker, yeah, something like that.
Yes, I apologize.
Ted Hilton Walker?
Yeah.
I I apologize, Mr. Hilton Walker. Has requested that uh there be a joint meeting between the City Council and the Parks Commission at some point regarding the establishment of a parks. the establishment of a Parks Foundation. Yeah, so, um, I will stop there.
Super exciting. Any questions? All right, the next item on the agenda then is, uh, communications, there are none. This meeting is adjourned at nine forty-two.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Alex.